Call the meeting to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Second, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's not muted, is he?
I don't think he should be. Can you hear us, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Agenda is approved. Review of the minutes from the October tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Any open public comment? No one's on, are they? Our ratings are falling. All right. Guests, we have Lyle from Cedar and I can't remember you.
Olivia.
Olivia, that's Olivia. Know you from a different, a different concept, that's what I say. Throws me off. Okay. So basically coming to speak about the success of Cedar's regional marketing campaign and currently allocating a dollar per resident, which comes to about seventeen hundred for the town of Proctor.
You leave us up there?
Yeah, probably so that Tom can see too.
Well, we very much appreciate the fact that you don't want to waste spring each year that you come because you know why we're coming, and it's to ask for money. But we also are going to ask you if you would please join us, and I'm going to give you a copy of these folders, but we hope that you will please join us for the opening of the Hub Co-Works in downtown Rutland. It's on Merchant's Row. We're going to have our grand opening on the fourteenth of November, and we'll have our annual meeting, which will be brief, we'll be giving away some awards. But the Hub Co-Works is a co-working facility and a business incubator, and we've been working with the Center on Rural Innovation to write a grant, and we are hoping that what you will see in the future are small businesses springing from this location with support from a program that we'll put in place in the hub. We recently received from the EDA almost a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to help fund this, and we received matching money from the city of Rutland and from other places in the equal amount, so we have money for the next three years to operate this facility. And we hope that it's going to spring small businesses. We hope that it'll be people that want to work at the Hub Co-Works, which is a co-working facility, and that they may be buying homes in communities like yours. So, going to pass this folder around. I'm going to leave one with Mike for you. And so, we have come to you, and you have been a supporter from the beginning when it came to regional marketing. And so we wanted to just briefly talk to you about the success of the program, the fact that it is working, and the fact that we want and need continued support. We'll talk a little bit about the budget because we want to be completely transparent, but what people sometimes ask us is, what, what's going on with this regional marketing thing? And so you see a picture there of Franklin's, and in the recent past, we did a campaign about my story is in, and we went to every, all twenty-seven towns in the county and Rutland City, and we found a person or people that are notable in the community and made sure we took their pictures, and then we put them out on our website. So, what's happening with regional marketing? Olivia's going to tell you a little bit about a campaign that we just did and why campaigns work. So I'm going to just turn it over to her, and she's going to walk you through the right-hand side of that brochure.
So underneath the photo of your neighbors is an article that we wrote recapping the Real Rutland Weekend Getaway. So, our most recent campaign was the Real Rutland Weekend Getaway, where we put out on social media ads that reached over four hundred thousand people nationwide about a weekend that we were giving away, pretty much all-inclusive, here in Rutland County for people who are serious about relocating here. So we had about four hundred fifty people apply, and then I interviewed about thirty people who were of the more serious subset, and then from there, we invited four of the families to come. They were from Austin, Texas, just outside of LA, California, Manhattan, New York, and Raleigh, North Carolina. They stayed up in Killington, they came down into this Rutland City, they did an entire Rutland County-wide scavenger hunt that took them to every single town within the county. Some of them went to the Marble Museum over here. And then, they got to do other things like kayaking on the reservoir, rock climbing inside. One of the families actually ended up putting an offer on a house in Pittsburgh, and we've been staying in contact with these families who are interested in coming here. And for those who didn't get selected for the Weekend Getaway, we've also been talking to them and keeping in touch to see how we can help them if they do decide to relocate here. So, underneath that is the Real Rutland and Concierge Program at a glance. So since we began this almost seven years ago, we've had over two hundred people move here to over ten towns throughout the county, and at this time, we have over thirty people who are active concierge volunteers, which they're basically the families, the people who move here, their first friend when they come here, someone to welcome them to the community and kind of tell them what Rutland County is really about. So underneath that is the Weekend Getaway advertisement target, targets. Those are the areas that we see a lot of people moving here from. Many of them are climate chasers, they're coming to where it's cooler, here, where we don't have wildfires, and they feel safer starting a family. And then underneath that is a potentially confusing bar graph, but the blue bars are when we're not running a campaign, and then the green bars are when we are running a campaign for June of two thousand twenty-two, which shows you that when we do have a campaign running with money from towns, that it really works, we get a lot of people on our website seeing where we are and learning about us.
So circling back to why are we doing this? Because our employers need employees. And if you look at that picture of the people who came to visit as part of the Weekend Getaway, there were eight adults. Four of them could work remotely from where they currently work around the United States. The other four have skills that we could find them jobs immediately. And our employers continue to say we don't have a deep enough pool of skilled labor to draw upon, and so that's why we're doing this. And it also will put more students in our schools, it will allow us to spread out the tax base so that we can afford the infrastructure that we want in our towns and communities. We continue to be an aging county, we continue to not have a high enough population to support everything we want to do. You're helping with that with your donation. And the very last page of that, because we want to be very transparent, is the budget. And you'll see that we have a budget of about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Part of that comes from the towns. Rutland City recently donated sixteen thousand, which is one person per, person in the city, and we are going to several other towns, including yours, asking for the same. You've been there from the very beginning, and I very much appreciate that. And this is, we consider a ten-year plan, we're now going into year seven, and we continue to look back and see how are we doing? When we get to ten, year ten, my bet is we're going to come back for year eleven, because when you market, you just keep going. You can't stop marketing. And even during the pandemic, Ford kept marketing their trucks. They couldn't make them because they didn't have computer chips, but they kept marketing their trucks because they knew eventually they, they needed to continue to be out there because they would be getting their trucks out there. And now you see them selling trucks again. How we're spending the money, you'll see that at the bottom there, primarily staff and marketing. And the marketing is in large part outbound, yet during the winter season, we do marketing up at Killington because there are thousands of people that come, and we want them to see the Killington TV ads, we want them to see ads in the Mountain Times, and so we do some internal marketing as well. So this is probably the same thing that we said last year, and the year before, and the year before, but it's working, and people are getting their eyes on Rutland County, and they're, they are visiting, and they are coming here. And you might say, only two hundred people moved here? Well, in Killington, seven hundred and fifty people moved to Killington during the pandemic. They doubled their population. But they were folks that didn't come through our program. They were folks that had second homes, and they came up to live in their second homes primarily. But we know the two hundred people that are on our list came through the program because we have a concierge volunteer who, a coordinator, that talks to them, and then connects them with other volunteers to answer their questions. So we are respectfully asking that if you wouldn't mind, I like the seventeen hundred dollar figure, I was going to come and ask for sixteen forty, but seventeen hundred's even better. So if you would put that money in your budget, again, we would love it, and we'll continue to do the work that we're doing with your support.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
You know, it seems to be, seems to be helping, and if we don't do this continual advertising in the programs that you're doing, it's a, really a small amount to put into the pot.
Lisa?
Um, am I, did I hear you correctly that you said that when it came to Proctor for the scavenger hunt, they went, you directed them to the Marble Museum?
Yes.
So they needed to come and they needed to take a picture of some place in each town? And so they were asked to come and take, because it's just a prominent location to take a picture, so they were outside.
I'm a little disappointed that you think that is the marketing of the town of Proctor. I think that if you watched our select board meetings or listened to people and found that recreation is really a huge part of what we've done with Beaver Pond, with the Carriage Trail, with the wedding. And so it seems odd to me that as people that are in marketing, that you wouldn't be more in touch with who we are in Proctor, and that you would send them to what I would consider to be a stagnant business for the past three years, rather than, you could have sent them here to the town office, you could have sent them to Beaver Pond, there's a sign there, you could have sent them to the rink, to the Carriage Trail, to the library, to the falls, where there's a historic sign where we have the largest falls in the state. So, that makes me, I, I have questioned you every time you've come, and to me, this is another check against that as marketing people, you would send people to our community to a dead establishment.
And you have a lot of places, many of which you've just listed.
That I sent you a paragraph about so that our town was updated and current on the website because it was so stagnant for so long and not current with what was going on in the town.
And so I might push back just a little and say that the, the event that I went to two Saturdays ago at the Marble Museum had a couple hundred people there.
That's one event in three years.
And that was an opening, and I think, an exciting moment for your community, as Zion Growers is beginning to support the things that are going on here. So, I hope that that grows over there, I hope that our involvement would, helping to bring in some businesses to that because it's not full, there's a lot of space in there, and they're looking right now for folks to, to join them. So, I hope that that happens, and I do remember you've sent us stuff, thank you for that.
But, but you went to one event in, in an institution that's been closed for three years. We have the Marble Bridge, we have a falls, and you still, you send people from out of town to a place that's not even open, where people aren't even there on the weekends. I just, I don't understand that. There are people at Beaver Pond, I mean, if you wanted people to have an experience and see what was happening in our town, there are people there every weekend, there are probably people there tonight. So you can push back, but because you went there two weekends ago, for when is it even opening again? We've heard for years now that it's opening. I, I honestly think that you're not in touch with what this board has invested in, in our town, and what volunteers in this town on the Beaver Pond Committee and other recreational committees spend a lot of time to highlight this town. And I, I think that's a misstep with how you represent us.
I mean, I've got to agree with Lisa in that it'd be nice to be featured one of these times. You know, I know that the people at the rink would be more than happy to organize a skating party for one of your groups or that, I mean, there's nothing even to organize if you went to Beaver Pond and did some kayaking there. We do have a lot more to offer than the Marble Museum.
Definitely, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Definitely reach out to us if you want to do things, I mean, we're open to it, and we want to spread out and not just stick to Rutland City, it's Rutland County that we represent, so reach out to us about things.
Which was the intent of the scavenger hunt, which was to get everybody out into the communities, which worked. And as a result, they came back and they showed us pictures, and they received gift baskets from Beard Family Farm.
Yes.
And we've shipped those to all locations around the US, so.
And driving to the Marble Museum, they came over the Marble Bridge and came through the downtown, so.
I'm just gonna, I know seventeen hundred dollars isn't a lot of money. I do agree with a lot of, of what everyone has said. I guess my issue, and I'm just going to say this, and I maybe slammed for it, I, it's okay. I just feel that like recently in the paper with everything going on with RRA and all the other agencies, and, and I feel like the focus always is on Rutland, and I understand this is a bigger scope, reaches further out, but I feel like they were slammed because they basically only met with people when they wanted money. And I kind of feel this is the same situation. I don't see you guys coming here to visit us on a periodic basis to say, hey, what's happening, or to go visit with our businesses, and maybe you do, and we're just not privy to it. And as far as like bringing, you know, marketing and bringing people here, that's great. I'm not a big advocate of this, of these out of staters in our state, only because I feel like people who are Vermonters haven't had the opportunity to actually purchase homes and grow and stuff like that because of this, and I feel like the push has just always been out, like bring everybody in, but we don't have the sustainability or the ability to support them with businesses downtown, you know, places to work and things like that. So, I feel like sometimes the marketing tool is mostly just let's bring people in, but then downtown is still not thriving, you know, there's not restaurants and businesses opening to kind of draw people, like once you're here, what do you do? You know, other than our whole recreation, you know, aspect of Vermont. So, that's where I kind of have issues with it, and I just feel like I said, it's a small amount, but still, it, these days in every town, every dollar counts, and if it's not benefiting us, then it's, you know, seventeen hundred dollars, not worth it. So, that's just my two cents.
We have done a lot with Proctor Gas. They're one of the prominent companies, businesses that reaches out to us and works with us. We reach out to them, I came over and did a story with them, but.
Why didn't anyone reach out to us for the Weekend Getaway and ask us to do something here in Proctor?
I usually did reach out to every town.
You reach out to?
I reached out to every town.
Who, who do you reach out to in town?
I usually reach out to the town managers and the town secretaries.
Olivia specifically asked for where would you like us to put on the map, so.
Yeah, and I was about to kind of speak up and take some heat for that. I, I was under the impression that the Marble Museum would open up this summer, so I thought, well, if the Marble, I remember when I visited Proctor a year and a half ago before I was town manager, when you go on Google what to do in this area, it sends you to the Marble Museum, and I was one of those disappointed tourists to, to show up and find that it was closed for who knows how long. So my, my understanding was that it would be open and just, you know, in a quick thought, hey, this might be a good idea for you guys to represent on your scavenger hunt, but I also hear your point very loud and clearly, so that there are more assets in town than just that that we can highlight. And I, and I can do a better job of that in the future.
Happy to come back and talk about economic development anytime you'd like. We have, we're in pretty close contact, I think, with, with Mike. Sent an email today about Green Mountain Power and efficiency Vermont and what options might be available there. So we will help in any way we can. And you did a lot of marketing for Zion Growers.
Yes.
Questions? Your support would be appreciated. We always appreciate coming to Proctor. No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wouldn't blame you if you left. Okay, next on the agenda is good stuff.
How'd the book sale go?
So, great.
Cool.
The signpost looks great out there.
Yes, it does.
Looks really nice. Are we doing one on the other end eventually?
Uh, we're getting there.
Yeah, I think they're going to build.
Yeah.
Looks so different, looks.
Oh, it looks great.
Really nice.
Looks more modern in some ways, which is.
Looks formal.
Well, they cleaned it, well, they, they cleaned it really good, too. They showed me a picture of all the mud coming off of it.
Solid and stuff, it looks, it looks more welcoming, it looks like, you know, not like, oh.
We went out to the scrapyard and got some pipes and.
Hanging on by a thread or something.
It looks nice, it really looks nice, they did a, they, it's amazing that they loved that.
It looks good. It does.
Yeah, and that was one of the, one of the goals of getting it up this year, to kind of drive the incentive of maybe making us another one next year to get it up.
We had tryouts at the high school for the play, and so that will be up and going, so it should be exciting because it's going to incorporate the high school and the elementary school, so.
That'd be good.
It's always fun to see little kids on stage.
When is that, the play going to be?
December something, isn't it?
Sixteenth, you know, something like that. I'll have that when I come back, so.
All right. Highway Department, Foreman's Report, everybody got that in their packet?
Mm-hmm.
I like this.
That is thorough.
It's good, and that.
Yeah.
I do like it.
Kyle's been doing an excellent job. The only thing I have to add to his report is that we, I, I highlight this because it does take a good bit of work of tracking all these invoices and reviewing them. So, we submitted reimbursement for the Florence Road Repair, that was done successfully. And then this week, now that I have time sheets, we're submit reimbursement for the MRGP project that happened next to the town garage, which was completed about two weeks ago, and I have been including our safety trainings in your packet, but I didn't do it. And this month, we did a training on sprain and strain injury prevention.
Thank you. All right. Beaver Pond Preliminary Plan Review.
Yeah, so we have Jeff and Jenny. Jeff is our design engineer with BHB, and Jenny is our project manager from DeBois and King. So, just so we all know, they offered to come down here to, because the thought was it'd be easier to maybe do this in, in person and show you everything, but it's a long drive for just a short fifteen-minute meeting, so I thought this would be a little bit more efficient, and I believe they'll, they'll be able to share their screen with us if they need to. So, they're here to answer any questions, give us a brief update, and maybe try to manage my expectations of, of the project a little bit, but, so it's, it's all I got.
So basically, everyone that you talked to is, is definitely in agreement and okay with it, other than Judy you hadn't heard from?
Yeah, so I've got to follow up with Judy. So I met with, well, I sent Joel, so what, where we're at right now is we have preliminary plans, and they're under review. It gave me the opportunity to send them those off into an email. Now, we're not in the right-of-way phase, so I'm getting ahead of myself by doing this, but I sent it to three different landowners, to Omia, Frank, who I met up at the quarry, and Judy Taranovich. There is one more landowner that, that we just barely go onto their property, so I'm going to have to meet with them as well, but it's just, it's just, it's just a slope that has to go on to the property. Frank and Omia, it doesn't seem to be, I don't think that's going to get, I don't think that's going to bog down the progress. Judy, I just haven't spoken to yet, and this new landowner, I have to approach as well. If, if we have any issues with them, I think there is a possibility of maybe moving the scope of the project over just a little bit to stay off of it, but I just, I don't see that as being necessary yet.
Is it a new landowner or one that is just like a Butts Franks?
It's a little bit west of Franks, so I believe it's Anderson.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's got to be a small amount, because I think, doesn't it cut right up and then just go back down?
Mm-hmm, just barely.
Right.
So, so that's where we're at with it. I don't want to get ahead of Jeff here, but we did meet with the state, and, and they, this is Peter, Peter, I don't, I don't have pronounced Peter's last name, Poshop?
Poshop.
Oh, Poshop. So, we met with Peter Poshop. They're always a bit hesitant to enter into the right-of-way phase before we're there, but they felt comfortable with BHB going ahead and giving me plaits of the right-of-ways so I can get that process going. I got motivated a few months ago and decided I would like to push this to summer of two thousand twenty-three. It's scheduled for summer of two thousand twenty-four. It's ambitious, to say the least, but it's something we're going to work towards. We, another thing that kind of worries me a little bit about two thousand twenty-four is we have three capital improvement projects that we're thinking about accomplishing that. Beaver Pond Path, South Street Sidewalk, and now maybe the upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. So it's, it's going to be a lot to manage for one, and for two, they're all reimbursement-based. So those, as soon as we pay those things, they need to come back so we can continue funding our normal operations. So, that was a long way of saying I feel confident that I can get right-of-way agreements in pretty fast, but there's still two landowners that I've not spoken to.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I was over at Franks the other day and, and went over the, yeah, the plans on the counter there and.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Yeah, I dropped him off a copy.
Yeah, and got a nice-looking gate up there now.
Yeah.
It's the entry to our bike lane.
Well, it does, and that was one thing I kind of caught Frank in the act up there. He was erecting a fence along the property line, and that's something that when we first started the project design, the town was going to put a fence there, so I just need to coordinate with him that he doesn't build a fence there, and then we need to take it down for a temporary, for a temporary construction efforts or to change that slope a little bit. So I need to go up there and pay another visit to him, but he, he seemed on board with the project, so.
That's good.
Confident that we can, we can get through there.
If we can move it up here, that would be amazing.
We're, I'm going to do, Jeff and I spoke, and we're going to really kind of walk step by step from this point forward, you know, so we're going to be meeting once a month just to check in, we're going to have the state involved in that meeting, but we're going to, we're going to put our best foot forward to kind of get it done in a timely manner. And Jeff, I think I stole all of your talking points there, so I apologize. I get going sometimes.
That's why it's a good reason not to drive down.
I was just thinking that. That was a long, long to deliver the same message.
Yeah.
No, that was, that was well done. Like, while you summarize it, well, I guess while I had that, while we are not, like, you know, not too optimistic that we're gonna get right-of-way immediately. It's, it's a historically difficult process to get through. There's some back-and-forth with Vtrans that needs to be done. However, Michael's done a great job getting a head start on it, something that you don't see in a lot of these projects. So we're hopeful that means you can get a shovel in the ground in 2023, but it won't, it likely won't be the, you know, completed construction by the end of 2023. I think we're, we're feeling like, you know, we'd be optimistic to get it, you know, started in 2023, and that's feasible, but just to be like, more realistic, it's, it's not gonna be open until 2024. I think that's, that's the reasonable timeline with the expected number of Vtrans reviews that need to happen between now and then. I'm happy you two go through those in detail if you would like to just walk through the process, but I think Michael you hit on the head that, you know, we're gonna be meeting regularly here as we enter this final phase of the project, so I think we're gonna have some nice momentum to make all this happen as fast as we can.
Hopefully you can have a ribbon-cutting January 1, 2024.
That would be cool. I'm optimistic about the construction time. I think the project can be built rather fast. It's really gonna be a race for us to get to bidding day by getting this project out to bid, and so we just gotta get through these hoops and hopefully we can get something at least started in 2023.
Great.
Thank you.
Phil Anderson has his hand raised, but I'm not sure if it's for this conversation or if it was for Lyle. I apologize, I didn't see there was a message in the chat.
He on, is he muted?
Yeah, they're on. Oh, just wanted to ask what normal days activities were at their office. Thanks was for marketing group. Okay, goes for the marketing group.
All right. Anybody have any questions on the?
No.
No. Sounds good.
Thank you both.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, nothing further under Highway? Is there a motion to go out of the board meeting into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Foreman's Report, nothing to add from. Credit Supervisor Report.
So I've actually gone through and drafted you a memo. I was nervous I wouldn't be able to get the credit supervisor report in time, but I was. So just to kind of add to this, I spoke to Emerald Acres. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start at the top and go down here on, on the list of delinquencies. I spoke to Emerald Acres Investment Friday. I've got a, I've got a phone number for them, and she said she's mailing off a check. She was gonna mail off a check to pay in full Friday, and usually when they say they're gonna do that, it happens. So we're kind of expecting that to come through. Lance Shu, I believe, is about to refinance. Usually when that happens, they expect all the utilities to be paid off, so that's something we'll be mindful of. Mr. LaFrance has a letter to you that, that, that's gonna be touched on later on in the meeting. And then Zion Growers, this was one of those scenarios where they're new to town, so they didn't receive a tax bill, so I reached out to them and let them know that they're, they're delinquent and they're gonna get, sounded like they were gonna get straight.
So is this, this is wa, this is water sewer?
Correct. And then, so the way that I kind of.
So I'm just wondering, okay, so they didn't get those bills either?
They didn't get, yeah, because they didn't get their water and sewer bills, because they just took ownership.
Is the preservation trust moved?
Yes.
Yep.
And then the bottom here are kind of newer delinquencies. Well, ones have a crap back over 750. Even when I'm down there, these people kind of been shuffling in, so.
Can I just go back to Zion? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So, um, so is that just since they've taken over that that's what the costs are for the water sewer?
Yeah, they have a, a pretty large water and sewer bill.
They pay more than one.
Yeah, they pay more.
Tool does.
Right. Okay. Okay.
And if no one has any more questions, that's kind of the wrap up of my credit supervisor report. Aside from that, we did have a collection committee meeting, and I, I think it went really well. You have a few representatives here that can speak on more if they would like, but we're now on meeting again next week, two weeks.
I like the color coding.
Yeah.
It's a bit Halloween-ish.
Yeah.
Very West Rutland.
That's what we'll let it go this time.
I'll make a holiday theme.
There you go.
But, um, yeah, and I think we're gonna have a, we're already doing really well. This is one of those months, two months, where people really, under new agreements, don't pay on their delinquencies anyway. They're just in charge paying current. So I, I feel strongly that this number will continue to go down, and then when we're able to make shut-offs again in the spring, as I, now that I've got my feet under me, I think we're, it's gonna be efficient. So this is the 325 feet of main line that was installed and four homes that were rerouted to the new line. I believe Pat finished them all up. I checked on them on Monday before I went down on to leave, and he just had one more home to do. So I believe all four houses are now connected to the new main line running along Golden Bridge Road.
Great.
Great.
Field Street Wellhouse Pump Repair Update.
So this is really good news. The motor came in a lot sooner than we thought it would, and Parker Wells will be here this week to install the motor. A representative from A and E will be there to just kind of observe it all, and he, he's also bringing the water side of the pump. Remember, I kind of gave you a really high estimate, and then I went back down. He's bringing the water side of the pump, but we will not install that unless A and E says it is necessary, so.
Lisa want a cop drop?
No, I won't.
All right. Okay, just wanted to make sure you're okay. Okay, any questions? All right, is there a motion to go out of Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, nothing to add in the Foreman's Report? Willow Street Sewer Project Update.
You know, I haven't been down there, so I've been relying on Bruce, who's giving me updates, and he told me that the paving looks like it was done. I spoke to Rick Dupont on Thursday, right before, or one day before they started doing paving, and A and E also agreed that it was one of the smoothest-running projects that they've ever had the pleasure of designing and managing. So I'm really happy that that's kind of behind us, and I'll be excited to get new flow rates coming into that Willow Street Pump Station.
Yeah, it's gonna be a good rainstorm. That'll be a good test. And the only thing that I, they hadn't cleaned up the triangle down there, but that's, that was just a matter of moving some stuff and redoing some grass and seed. But all the grass, it appears though it's, looks real good down there that they reseeded and planted the specific plants that they, they needed to put in.
Oh, yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah, it's nice to have the blacktop, too, on.
Oh, I bet.
Yeah.
North Street. They even did a good job there, too, at the tail end on people's property, like paying it, stuff like that.
Yeah, well, just having Rick Dupont out there, a little plug, a little plug for Rick. I mean, it was incredibly helpful. Every project, I was, I was project manager for quite a few years, and I never had support like that on the ground, so it really made the whole process a lot easier.
Yeah, it made it really run smoothly.
WWTP ESA Update.
Yeah, so a lot of letters there, but that's the wastewater treatment plant engineering services agreement. We're, we're just still waiting on the state to get back with our application, and we're just poking and prodding. And I've been saying for a couple select board meetings now that we're getting it back, and I think Wayne Elliott and I are hoping again it'll be at our next meeting, so.
Yeah, I had a chance to chat with, with both Wayne and Jason at the town fair.
Yeah, and, and if they're down this week, too, for the pump, I think we'll probably take them down to the treatment plant just to walk around a little bit more.
Yeah, Wayne's pretty familiar with that. He was, you know, really involved when we put the, the new building up. Yeah.
Anything else? Nothing under Sewage Commissioners? Is there a motion to go out of the Sewage Commissioners and into the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I've been speaking a whole lot, so I'm just gonna kind of run through it to not waste anybody's time. You have my report there in front of you. So I submitted reimbursement for Florence Road Repairs. Again, I, I had that earlier in the meeting, but it, it does take a good bit of time as these projects are going on. We issued, we sent an issuing letter of fines for Kane Street. I've had trouble getting in contact with the officer that went up there. Maybe he's having trouble contacting the homeowner, but we're just not sure, so I'll reach out to him tomorrow and follow up on it, but it's something we're tracking. And it doesn't look like any effort has been, been made to clean up the property, even after the letters. I, again, attended various local and regional committee meetings, or, you know, these include Parks and Rec, FIRA and SPR, which was just a FEMA roundtable event, Vermont Leagues Cities, Vermont City Managers Association, the Planning Commission, and Collections Policy Committee. Like Lyle said, we were both in attendance of the Marble Museum. Well, we're called Open House. I think that's what they called it. There were over 150 people in attendance, along with Zion, and Zion celebrated their first shipment of hemp there. They, they actually said something like it was the first legal shipment of hemp in Vermont or something, so.
Really?
Something along those lines. So kind of exciting. And it doesn't, and it doesn't stink.
It doesn't?
Well, I don't smell it. I didn't smell it when I was over there, so. It, I think I saw a picture of it. It just kind of looks like hay.
Like a bale?
Yeah, it's a big bale.
Yeah. So, um, uh, we executed facility use agreement for the Girl Scout meeting at the rink. I've got that included in your packets along with our proof of insurance. I like to see our assets being used for stuff like this. I attended the Vermont Better Places webinar. I'm, I won't be able to share this on the screen, but it's kind of a neat program if you look into it. I've never, I've always thought about this, but never really figured it would happen. You know, a lot of times towns have trouble making matches to projects they wanted to, like even smaller projects. Well, the Better Places program actually allows crowdsourcing to match projects. So if you have something small around town, I, someone did a pickleball court through it, and I think there was a lot of planning around that, but if, if the town is interested in doing some kind of beautification projects or Better Places projects, then you can create this kind of like crowdfunding page to meet your match. So if you're interested, anybody interested, I can send you the webpage. They've got some of the projects on here that they've done, like here, the Mary Bar, Mary Holidays Light Up the City. You know, they, they're aiming for 5,000. They've gotten $4,000 and 21 days left, so kind of a neat idea. So if anybody wants to check that out, Better Places, Empowering Vermonters to Create Vibrant Public Spaces.
We could do that with Beaver Pond.
Yeah, I bet you can do it with all kinds of stuff. So something to kind of think about if you've got any projects around town that work. So Beamers couldn't be here at this meeting, they'll be at our next one. I'm, I'll, I'll get to that later. So website content updates, a few updates have been made, but most important is that winter on-street parking rules take effect November 1st. And that, you can view more detail on that on homepage. Okay, audit report update. I'm not gonna give a full audit report of the report, but what is kind of nice to see is that if you, if you have, so in front of you, you have two balance sheets. One is for our general fund and one is for our proprietary funds, so our enterprise funds like water and sewer. The bottom three lines are, are kind of the important part of the general fund balance sheet. So we had revenue, the town had revenue of about $47,285 at the end of the, so we started off the year with, with, I'm gonna use flat numbers, we started off the year with $136,000 in the bank, we ended the year with $184,000 in the bank. I'll have hard copies of this, and, and it was kind of the same trend with our proprietary funds as well. So our financial position is stable. So, okay, big news. Next meeting, we have our FY '24 budget presentation, or I do, anyway. I'm hoping to have this in your mailbox, it's not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, because I think we have a couple weeks until our next select, I think it's like one of the longer.
Yeah, there's an extra week.
So it actually gives me a little bit more time, and I, not all of my numbers are exact yet. I'm still waiting for a few contracts to come in, like Lisa Wright's, and I think the mosquito district, we've got a good handle on now, but, but I feel confident my numbers are close, and I've still gotta meet with Chief Webb just to kind of go over some details of his, uh, his expectations. And he might be at our next meeting as well, because I think they're getting closer to wanting to buy this fire truck, but I'll let him speak towards that. He knows much more about it than I do. And then project management activities, we, we've gone through the gambit here of everything we got going on, and, and some of it's wrapping up, some of, some of it's just starting. So I won't go through that big, long list. But the draft personnel policy is open for discussion and feedback. That's just a reminder to everyone. I have nothing else to add to it. We're just standing by for feedback regarding some discussion with Beamers. And that concludes my financial report, and feel free to ask me any questions.
Do they have any questions?
No.
All right. Discussion action items. Everybody looked at the bills?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, perfect, thank you. Sheriff's Report. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, the, the new format, I think, is a little easier to.
Read.
Yeah.
Taxile bidding authorization for 81 East Street.
Yeah, we have taxile tomorrow at 10 o'clock. This just authorizes me as the bidder for the town to set the base bid. That will cover delinquent costs, taxes, utilities, and then attorney fees.
We could end up with it, or somebody could actually be there and bid over it.
Yeah, and, and from what I've heard is that quite a few people have shown interest in the, in the property.
Oh.
So we do expect some.
That's good.
Yeah, oh, yeah, some bids.
That's great.
Yeah, perfect world, we don't, you know, we don't have to deal with it.
Right.
Yes.
If we do take ownership of it, we hold on to it for a year, because that's how long the, the owner has the, the previous owner has the opportunity to buy it back. So we hang on to it for a year and then sell it.
Yeah. Good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. You want this signed?
Uh, you, I, you know, you can make a motion or just sign that. I think either way would work.
All right, okay. Is there a motion to authorize town manager to bid on the taxile of 81 East Street?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, payment agreement for delinquent water sewer at seventeen Center Street. Everyone got that letter?
Yes.
Any discussion, questions, or thoughts?
So he's basically promising to pay the balance once the first of the year comes. Is that right, Michael?
Put some down on the balance.
Yeah, so he's asking this time two hundred a month for the first year. And after the first year?
Till the first of the year.
Yeah, till the first of the year. Put, put money down. He, so this is kind of, uh, kind of an interesting story. Mr. LaFrance and I, he's been calling me about once a week. And he was one of those that we were gonna shut off. Um, we were, we were in his yard shutting him off, and he reached out to Behab. And I, I think this is, I think we're kinda just locked up in, um, some red tape with him. Behab, he's applied to Behab once before, but did it himself, which, uh, you know, isn't suggested. But he did it himself and applied only for electric. So now he's having trouble reapplying, and again, it's just red tape, I think. So, uh, yeah, he's been working with me every week. I, I just go by the contract, um, which is eight payments, which puts him well over four hundred a month. Uh, which he's expressed to me that it's just kinda out of the realm of possibility for him. So this is his next step in, in the, in the process.
Any thoughts, comments, considerations?
Does he have an agreement currently?
He does not.
So we can't do anything until April anyway.
Right.
So if he does follow through and he does the two hundred a month, and then he takes money from his 401K and pays it the first of the year.
Right, then it's paid out.
Yeah, I don't think we need any action for that, though. I think we're just, 'cause...
Except that agreement? I mean, we don't have an agreement.
It's not an agreement, it's just we're gonna let him do that, and then if April comes along...
Right, but I would put it in writing as an agreement.
So we just go with the two hundred a month for now until?
January one.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Do you wanna extend it beyond January one? Because, I mean, it's not as though, I don't know, I don't think he can just transfer the money that quickly. January first.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
But he needs time to...
Maybe a week or two.
That happen.
Yeah.
I'm thinking...
So it's, I mean, you're only talking three months.
Right.
If you go through to the end of January.
If he did two hundred a month, say, through the end of January, right? Maybe February first might be a better time.
And I would, yeah. Does that work? So two hundred for, until he can get that money, hopefully by February one, by the time all the paperwork's done. And then, uh, then I guess we have to decide, are you, are you looking for him to pay off the balance of delinquent at that time? Or have a extended agreement that he's paying more than the two hundred?
I would, I would think that he should need to pay enough to get him to the point where two hundred a month from that point would get him current. Does that make sense?
Oh, his balance, whatever he pays down?
Right.
Oh, okay, okay, and then he continues...
And then continue with the two hundred dollar, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so I would expect to see a down payment on February first. That would make that two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
And then, but I guess we also wanna make it clear with him, um, because I do admit, I haven't been totally clear up to this point on, on this argument. But do see it pretty clearly now, that he needs to be making current payments as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So whatever, whatever from that balance will get him to the point where two hundred will get him current completely by June thirtieth.
Which, which is clear, and I do understand is clear in our new contract. I was just having a hard time wrapping my mind around that was not a contingency on the older contracts.
Right, and you said the whole balance of delinquency paid by June thirtieth?
No, whatever it would be, so that the two hundred dollar a month payment, sorry, by June thirtieth? Yes, everything done by then, that's clear.
All right, okay.
Question to the board. I would use the big, uh, bank. Because for some, like, I mean, if he's gonna pay two hundred dollars a month, how much interest are you gonna get asked to tell people?
One and a half percent.
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 One and a half percent. Do you know when you go to a bank and borrow money, that, that, that you don't pay one and a half percent?
That's what was passed by the town at town meeting.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it's, it's, it seems like that everybody's on a payment plan here. It's not fair to some of us that do pay our bills on top. I'm on the bank board, all right, and I'm concerned about this, that it's beginning to be like a payment plan.
Michael, how much have we reduced the delin, the delinquencies in the last six months?
So in twenty nineteen, the delinquencies were over two hundred thousand. And on July first, it was at a hundred and forty thousand, and it is now currently at ninety-nine thousand. If you don't add in the, the new, the, the new delinquency amounts from the old water. So pretty significant.
'Cause I'm just saying, most people would go to the bank and borrow their money, pay the thing off, and then they would pay you back. And it seems like at, at this percentage, I shouldn't blame Michael, this is a good percentage, only one, what'd he said, one point four?
I think it's one point five for the first, and then there's another, something else kicks in once it's...
It's one percent in the beginning, and then it's one point five.
Yeah.
'Cause you can't get that back.
Again, John, this is what the town voted on.
I, I, I know, but I'm just saying, times have changed.
This was like four years ago. And I think it's the most we're allowed to charge by statute, yeah.
Yes.
And I think, and the collection committees is now working on new procedures. And I think, you know, if, if not penalizing of anything, it's equating for future value of money. You know, so a dollar today is not worth what it is tomorrow. It's just kind of the basis of interest.
And do you get stuck every once in a while?
While we're paying bills?
They, they don't pay it?
Oh, yeah, but I think we, I think we go back.
Negotiate it again?
No, we don't no, we created it so we don't negotiate again. If they break the agreement, they break the agreement, and we shut the water off.
And to get it turned back on would have to be a significant down payment.
It'll watch your stuff on that one. You can't get sued on that one.
Okay, is there anything else?
Um, just a, an update on, uh, you probably saw the article in the paper, let's see, last Saturday, about the mosquito district, uh, there. At the meeting, we went down through the, uh, line-by-line budget. And, uh, you know, our assessment as a, we contract with them, it's probably gonna go up, uh, a couple of thousand dollars. And, uh, and going to a, a meeting they wanted everybody to attend, and, uh, I'm going to that Wednesday night. They, uh, they came up with a, you know, a budget, and it really was going to, um, affect Pittsford and Brandon really pretty, pretty significant. So they rescinded the motion that had been made last month. And we're going to, uh, look over the formula that they came up with, uh, maybe spread it out a little more, because it was going to be pretty substantial for, uh, Pittsford and, and Brandon, so. And, uh, so I'm going up to that. There's two meetings, and then we're gonna try to revise this, uh, formula, so it's, uh, it works out, so it didn't put everybody in.
When's the next meeting, Bruce?
Pardon me?
When's the next meeting that you meet?
Uh, when, Wednesday night, we haven't set the following meeting, but then it will, whatever we come up with in these next, uh, two meetings, uh, then it'll be brought before the whole board. What have you, so, but, uh, there probably is gonna be some changes there. There may be some differences when people want to have their backyard sprayed for a, a gathering. There, there might be a charge for that. It's in the talking stage. It may be that people that want, don't wanna be sprayed. Uh, there's quite a lot of labor involved in that, for them to come out and put stakes in. And then, uh, when the season is over, taking them out, so. So they're trying to be as upfront on the cost as possible. Just to update what you know, that we're, we're trying to be really out in the open, and chemicals have gone up and what have you, so.
Can I say two things, and I gotta go, I'm going to do this.
Sure.
I wanna listen to Tom and Dan this. Number one, this town's got four bottles, and this is the year that they should've been taking care of. This is the perfect year to take care of all these bottles in this pump, and this other water, all right? Second of all, I'm very concerned about the drinking water. I have talked to the state about it, they have talked to me about it, I'm concerned. And the last thing, the town people should be notified that the pump did fail and wasn't enough running at that time. And also the gate should be locked down there at the Field Street well. The way people are today, that gate should be shut in the lot. I'm telling you, you can't trust anybody today. And I'm just concerned about this. Because once this happens, something happens to the water, it's over with. It's good for him to say, "Well, don't worry about it." "Well, if I drink the water, I'm dead." It's over with. And they don't like that. You can see it all over the country now. Look at what Benny King's going through, and he's still going through it. People are up and out, and people are very tired. And I'm very concerned about the Field Street well. That gate's been open from day one. And why? Why do we spend all this money for a gate that we don't even shut live?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else anybody has under new business? All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session to enter, to discuss the town civil litigation over the assessed value of the Green Mountain Hydro Power Facility?
So I'll move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, to executive session.